Turning from our closed session item, this conference will be a council under existing litigation. We have no reportable action. With that, welcome everyone to the regular portion of the Lakeport City Council. And I'm going to call please.
Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Matina.
Here.
Excuse me, Councilmember Prolet.
Here.
Councilmember Spellman.
Here.
Here, Sheila.
Here.
Richard, would you please? Please.
Hi, slide allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we have a posted agenda. Any council staff see any items on there that's not correct? You have not, or can you motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda posted.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We do have an opportunity for public comment on each item that's on tonight's agenda. Please wait until we are taking that item up for your public comment. I will ask that you come up to the podium and please state your name for the record. For those of you wishing to public comment on any item that is not on the agenda tonight, but it's within the jurisdiction of the Lakeport City Council, you may do so during public comment. Would you ask that you fill out a white form that's on the table as you come into chambers? And please hand that to the clerk. Please understand that we cannot take any action on said item nor come to a consensus on any item that's not posted on the agenda. With that, we, do we have any urgency items tonight?
No.
The consent agenda, our items that are considered routine and non-controversial. This evening, we have our ordinances, which we waive reading except by title of the minutes from the regular city council meeting of March 3rd, 2015, and the special meeting of March 5th, 2015. We have application 2015-006 from the Community Care Management COLOC, the 2015 Lake County AIDS Walk on September 12th, 2015. We also have the application 2015-007 from Latinos United Lake County for the Cinco de Mayo Celebration to be held in Library Park May 3rd, 2015. We have the application 2015-008 from the Center of Life Choices for the 2015 Walk of Life in 5K Brown on April 25th, 2015. And we also have our tank site project, authorizing acceptance of the tank site project and recording notice of the patient with the county of Lake. It is my understanding that one of these applications we need to pull. Item D from the consent agenda, and we will discuss that separately. So if there's anything from council currently in there, anything else can be pulled. Any public comment on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for a motion, amended consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda minus letter D, the application from Latinos United Lake County for Cinco de Mayo Celebration.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. David, should you just take that up now?
Yes.
This is the application, once again, as stated, I didn't repeat our consent agenda, but it is from Latinos United Lake County, and there are some additional comments from our Public Works Department, and we need to add these in to the current application in order to approve it. Definitely, any thing from council? I don't know if we have anyone from staff here. Public, any of you in council? Please come out.
Hi, I'm Shishan, that's me, and I'm the chairperson for the Latinos United. And we were hoping to get approval for how they event this year at the park. But I understand there's some issues that you would like.
Do you know, does she have a copy of the additional items?
I don't, where, did you get a copy? Just came in today.
Yeah. No, but I'm sure we'll comply with whatever you want.
What, should we read those out?
Yeah, that's quite a lot.
Should we just read them all?
Yeah, we can. Here's some of the comments. This event has had issues in the past. It promoter meets the following requirements. I see this being a nice event, and this is from Doug Ryder in our Mother Works Department. Item number one, irresponsible party onsite until the event is completely cleaned up and vendors are gone. Number two, no poppers, the small exploding BBs is listed on here. Paper messes very hard to clean up. I assume that's a party popper.
It's confetti. It's like an egg that's filled with confetti, and we haven't seen those around for a while.
Okay. No stakes or pegs driven into the lawn.
Okay.
And I think that usually goes to the easy up tents if those are being used.
Yeah, the ages.
Using weighted water weights and sandbags.
Okay.
Cords and hoses cannot create a tripping hazard.
Mm-hmm.
And the city does not supply hose water.
You mean the hose itself, or?
The water.
Yeah, well, it says hose in parentheses, water. I don't know what.
These water hoes.
Yeah.
A water hose.
Oh, so they can use the water?
They can use the water, but we don't, we don't supply the hose.
Yeah, we'll bring that.
Okay.
And power cords too.
Okay. So any of those items, everything's there, looks good?
Everything's good, yeah.
The poppers is probably the hardest one to control, the people with the roll.
Yeah, well, as long as they're not handing them out, you know.
No, I think it was a dance group that performed, brought them with them, and cracked them at the end or something.
Well, then definitely make sure that when the event comes.
But we don't have that dance.
Okay.
One other item is that that is on a Sunday, and so there's a church across the street, and they've asked whenever there are bands in the park on Sundays that they don't use, turn the amplified music up really loud after their services, which is the lead in the 11 o'clock.
Okay, that's fine.
Which there's, well, again, there's only an hour overlap at that point.
So they can crank it after.
Okay, any questions? From council?
If we approved this with these comments added, this has become certain conditions for?
And what happens is we send out a, we send out a letter telling the applicant that there, it's been approved and with the following conditions, and then we list anything that was included on this document.
Anyone else from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application 2015-007 from Latinos United Lake County for the Cinco de Mayo Celebration to be held in Library Park May 3rd, 2015.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
And clerk, do we have any consent items?
No, we don't.
We'll move on to our public hearing. This is the CDVG supplemental activity, being asked to adopt a proposed resolution approving supplemental supplemental activities to the current CDVG contract and use for the program income funds to be used towards ADA improvements at Carnegie Library and street improvements.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as part of the CDVG program, we're sensitive changes to the ways that the Department of Housing and Community Development wants us to operate our program income. And jurisdictions that currently have an open grant, as the city does, and will be required to expend all the program income on hand first before they can access or draw down any of the grant funds from the state. And the city right now has a grant for revolving home fund for, excuse me, a grant for business loan, thank you, and for a lakefront revitalization. So the staff has recommended that the city of Lakeport amend the CDVG grant, the 14 that we got the share for the loans and for the lakefront, to include the program income, to use that program income for the ADA barriers, they call it the states, it's called removal of architectural barriers, which is all the ADA things, which is a lift to get everybody up to the second floor, which without that lift, we're not able to use the library for any public functions. It can be used in the private sense, but it's open to the public. We do need to have access to the top source of ADA accessibility. Right now, the current balance in our, our program income fund is about approximately 174,000 debt changes, that loans and payments are made to the CDVG loans that are out there. And we anticipate that approximately another 100,000 over the next 24 months during the life of the, of the grant. So we do need to spend those funds in order to be able to, to use the business loan program. So, yeah, and then any additional funds that we would need to remove barriers from the Carnegie Library, we have identified some of the streets in the city that are in census tracts that allow us to use those funds over low-income neighborhoods, that we can apply additional funds for road improvement in those areas. So staff is recommending use of these funds for the two items that I mentioned. Questions?
I have a question. It says, the current amount on hand is 174,000, and staff anticipates approximately 100,000 over the next 24 months. Additional?
Additional.
Additional, okay, because they would like, anticipate 100,000, what?
We have to give the, the state an estimated amount that we think, you know, and that could vary, but if someone pays, we play against the home, we sell the home, sometimes we get, you know, more money.
So it's, it's 100,000 additional, that's the word that was mentioned earlier.
And we feel that kind of conservative numbers, and that's probably be realistic.
And so, the street improvement project is designed to make sure that we, if we don't use all the money for ADA improvements, bringing the lift in and do all that, then we'll have to expend the rest of it through some other place, and that was in the streets that were listed here on the staff.
It has to be items that are eligible under the national check of.
Just in case we're running out of budget, we need to be able to spend the rest of it to start the rest of the time.
Yeah.
When, when we commit out of budget? Yeah, when, but then we have to spend the rest of it anyway, in city streets.
And then we, we would need to do a preliminary, get preliminary plans to find a closer estimate on what the, that cost would be for Carnegie Library.
And one more thing, I suppose, when you're dealing with ADA, do you need to engage a consultant to do that, or do we have people in staff that actually will be able to look at it and say, you need this, this, and this, or do we need to bring someone in and pay them like 50 grand?
Actually, our very own Tom Carlton is, is very good at dressing, really good at that.
It's great, I guess that's going closer to being able to answer that building.
Yes.
I did have a couple of questions. This was a difficult issue for me, because by itself, improvement of the Carnegie Library is a significant economic development improvement. I can see how it's historically important to our community and enabling future use by any of the parties that, that seem to emerge from our future workshops. It is necessary in order to allow any of them during the public access of the building. It was when I started to consider either or, how they're too listed in a resolution, the economic development benefits of Carnegie Library versus the economic benefits of curb veteran sidewalk in our areas of town that are of the low income and needing improvements, that it became a little less clear to me. So what I was wondering is, is there any reason why the funds, as they come in, need to be allocated primarily to only the Carnegie Library, or do we have options, should, or do we have options simultaneously to look into curb veteran sidewalk improvements?
We do, we do have options. Those are the two activities we can do with the, that we're stating that we're going to use for those funds, but it's not in any order as to how they're used by approving this tonight.
So approval of this resolution then would enable us to use those funds for either of those two purposes?
That's correct.
Okay, that is helpful. When we were talking earlier this afternoon, it sounded as though city staff is already aware of the priority of street improvements. I was wondering if you'd like to, to expand a little bit on that one.
Yeah, I was just telling councilmember Turner, that's what I was asking about the curb sidewalk, actually, it came from one of our staff members, Doug Ryder. He and management staff thought it was a good idea. He'd like to come up with a policy to share the cost with residents for curb and sidewalk, where they pay for the material and we could do the labor. And we set aside a certain amount of hours that we want to do each year, that we're willing to do, and be able to get more sidewalks completed in the community by cost sharing. Try that for a couple of years, see if that works, if that costs. Because we do have staff, we do have staff that is able to do that work, it'd be a benefit to the city to see those sidewalks getting done. And we're looking forward to putting together a policy. That's about as far as we got on it right now, I don't have any details about that back. The other thing we talked about, we had to settle limits, you know, and the first half, first third half would be.
There's some key sidewalk areas in town, and especially in Seaver area, would really benefit.
Right, and then, I totally agree, and, and people have approached me in the past and said, you know, I, I'm not going to add on to my house, I'm not going to reroute my house, because then it's going to trigger my curb veteran sidewalk. And so, just having that barrier removed, having that done, is an economic development asset right there too. So it is helpful, I mean, I understand, it was, it was helpful for me to research this project, to know that the remains as high as I would, because when I first read this item, it seemed like, oh yeah, well, we could do curb veteran sidewalk, we're not going to make that much money conservatively, we're going to spend it all on Carnegie, so, so I, I think that with knowing that we have those policies, even if they're just at the conceptual level in the country, we're still going to be able to do considerable additional work.
And that's something the council would like us to bring back, we'd definitely like to do that if we do.
On that, permit?
Yeah, we'd like to bring that back.
Anyone in the public?
Like to comment on this?
Officially.
Oh. The public hearing is officially opened, but anyone from the public like to comment? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Bring it back to council for any further discussion or motion. See any discussion, will entertain a motion, it's a just a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the middle of supplemental activities to the current CDVG contract and use of program income funds to be used towards ADA improvements at Carnegie Library and street improvements.
We have a motion in the second. Any further from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mark it, and then everyone else. Okay, moving on to council business. Administrative Services Director, regarding the Department Secretary.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am here this evening to request that the city council approve funding of a new department secretary position, assigned to the Administrative Services Department. What we are finding in administrative services is that we have three major functions. We have admin services, which covers human resources and records. We have city manager, and then we have city clerk. With these three different functions, the support staff can get spread very thin very quickly, especially if any one of us is out for a length of time. So what we're hoping is to get an additional patient that could backfill, likely in HR, and then the other, the other department secretary could backfill in city clerk, and then the new city manager overflow kind of spread around. But this would help us greatly when there are staffing shortages, and would also set us up for the future for succession planning, which is one of the council goals, to get people more thoroughly trained in each of these areas, just to set us up for the future. So the fiscal impact this year would be an appropriation increase of $10,826, but ongoing the position would be an additional budget item of $65,626. Got any questions?
Anything from council?
So it seems to me that when you have people that are very highly skilled and come from a very rich background, special skills, that when they have to do paperwork and filing for themselves, this could be a very costly thing for the city if people aren't adequately supported by the administrative secretary. So is it possible that we're actually losing efficiency because we don't have enough help in the back office right now?
Yeah, and you're way overpaying for things that you should.
Because people that are making six figures shouldn't be filing papers.
Well, yeah.
I, I think that, I think that having people, administrative assistant doing a lot of the minutia is probably one of the most efficient things you can do, and if you had too much of that help, I don't think that would be a problem. I think you would find work for them, but having highly paid technical and highly skilled people back in there doing office work that should be shuttled to someone else, I think is a big mistake, and it would cost us a lot of money.
Yes, I agree. And the, the other thing to keep in mind too is that this is, a department secretary position is pretty highly skilled, it's kind of an old-fashioned title, but they, they do a pretty high level administrative work. So it does require a lot of training, that's why it's not so easy to call, you know, Kelly Girls, or whatever they used to be called, you just can't get temporary service at this level of training. You know, we just, because we've made attempts to do that, and it's just, it really isn't very fair.
Unless you train and temp and then make it go.
And they're gone, yeah, and then they're gone, yeah. So, and we just, we haven't really had very good success at finding temporary staff that has the ability, I guess. We just, we don't have the lucky temporary staff, so.
Is a position on customer groups?
And I should say that, like, Hillary Britton started out as a temporary staff, so when it works, it works great. But it doesn't, you know, four to one, but it doesn't always work out, so, anyway.
So just so I understand, this is a position that we would be creating, which we would hire someone who's already pretty much mastered clerical or administrative skills, and with the idea that that person would then through exposure to the support roles at any given would actually eventually possibly be in line for succession.
Yes, or at least keep things rolling until another, you know, person can be recruited in the event anyone of us decides to, so, you know, not, maybe not necessarily jump into any one of those roles, but the day-to-day functioning can happen very well and.
And they've received some mentoring or guidance along the way?
Yeah, there would be a huge training component in that, and there already is with our current department secretary, but with there being so many fields to have to cover, it's just a lot to have to know, so, and a lot to be.
Anyone from the public? Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
I'll move to approve funding for the department secretary position, assigned to the Administrative Services Department.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Peter Kelly. Next, our Public Works Director, this is the USDA bid award. Mr. Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I report you today is a request authorized to city manager to us, or to assign a contract with Bertha Fraser for completion of the USDA water wastewater improvement projects. Back in December, there was a bid that was drafted and sent out titled Water Wastewater Improvement Projects, was put out for potential contractors to bid on. It has a series of projects that are being funded through the USDA. The projects that went out for bid are the install a wastewater control system, water wastewater control system, which what we call SCADA, essentially automated controls that allow us to go home at night or minimally staff so that we can have operations on the pot. The second one is to replace the clearly avenues sewer pump station, it's a small sewer pump station that's inadequate for today's safety requirements. It's below the flood plain, so it has a potential for, another one is to replace manholes in the sewer main side on Main Street. It's going to be from clearly avenue all the way down to Sixth Street, we'll be upsizing that for a little bit for knowledge. Then we have, you know, to replace storm drain on Penn Street, right there by North Renee's Cafe over at the doctor, and see some links in the links, where the inlet of the storm drain can be replaced to allow for increasing the sewer main. So those went out to bid back in December. The bids came in, we opened the bids on January 28th, we had three bids that came in. The bids were evaluated, and Bertha Fraser was the most responsible bidder out of the three. These bids are good for 68. That's where we're at right now, is we're looking to USDA understand that it takes a while for them to get their financing structure in order. We're still waiting on that, we've had really good views from them as far as what to expect, as far as financing, grant participation, so we're really excited on that front. But we don't have the final, final word from the USDA. But we need to get the, the contract, that we should notice that they are awarded the contract issued before March 28th, or else the contract expires. So we're looking to get, to move this forward and get that notice, notice of award out. Once the notice of award is given, typically about 30 days after the happening, come together and have a pre-construction conference, and from there we have a notice of receipt of issue. Some are sort of the same time, maybe, and a bit like we have in other cases. So with that, if there's any questions for the council, perhaps it is.
If, so if we award the bid, but then don't have financing, what, I mean, can we get, just cancel the job? I know, I'm sure that would happen, but.
The thing might be best to answer this, but until the contract's signed, we need to notice the award that they received before, and we're waiting for as long as we can until we find out what happened. This is only on the water side. With wastewater, we're, we're fine with the financing from USDA, it's not, we haven't really started anything on wastewater side, it's all on the water side. So our cost up at the tank site is really a draw, it's over our budgeted amount. So the, the delinquency is only in the water aspect. We can look at internally financing if they need, but pretty, USDA is, they, they change the way that they secure the funding. They used to get the money from Washington and then Alexi, now, but now they're having to go to Washington. They, they get the Alexi, so it's, it's new for them, and they're working through the asphalt, so there's some delay, but they're confident that we'll get the funding. The grant is really the question, is how much grant money we can, and what we're hearing preliminarily is, is a pretty substantial grant funding.
Yeah, I spoke to USDA today, and it didn't seem to be any kind of question of whether we were going to get the funding or not. It was how much is going to be grant, how much is going to be loan, and he promised me for sure, but he was like in the high 90s, that we're going to get almost 100% grant on those funds we have for the 0.5 million. So that's not confirmed. But he had very bad expectations that that probably would be grant funded. So, that would be amazing. Wasn't even that expected, so...
I want to be good at that for some sidewalks, too.
But it wasn't really, he didn't feel there was even a question of whether we were going to, you know, fund it. It was just how much is going to be grant, how much would be loan, and so... Even, even saying that I don't have anything inside, but that was the word I had today on that.
Yeah, and I talked with the state engineer on this. He initially gave us a notice that it was okay, that everything looked fine for the most responsible bidder. And then he finally said, well, we need something more for the writing. So he issued a note of that, saying, yes, go ahead, Mr. Rannick. They understand, they don't want this to be a problem, you know, waiting on their funding companies. So they did give us some stuff in writing, and they're telling us that it looks really good. Yeah, it looks like you're going to get a lot of grant funding. Everything looks fine, it's just things are different now. We're restricted to the 60-day lifecycle of the bids.
Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? All right, Seem not, bring it back to council, are any further discussion or motion?
I'll move to authorize city manager or designate to execute a contract with Mercer Frazier for the completion of the USDA water and wastewater improvement project.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seem not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Margaret. All right, moving on with our special coordinate, special projects coordinator regarding the downtown improvement project, Mr. Richard Knoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I am Richard Knoll, special projects person.
Sounds like a rock song.
Did I lie?
You can have your story to hear it.
One time, didn't they call you retired?
Yeah. You know, I don't use that word, but, anyway. I am here to talk about the RFP and the proposal for the downtown Lakeport Improvement Project Phase Two Design Engineering. You have a staff report in your packet. And what is being asked is for the council to consider recommendation from the Downtown Lakeport Improvement Plan or Project Phase Two Engineering Consultant Selection Board. That was made up of myself, Kevin Ingram, and Marka Koppa. And also, the city manager was involved in that review and negotiation. And the recommendation is to hire a design engineering firm to develop and complete civil engineering plans for the project. And that CSB recommends the firm of Crawford and Associates out of Ducaia in Sacramento. In the staff report on page one, there's a reciting of the history of the project. As you know, there was a recommendation made last October to hire the firm of Rowan Associates to do essentially this same project. And the council directed staff to go out with a new RFP. That new RFP was sent out to 16 engineering firms. We got one proposal back, and it was Crawford and Associates. Crawford and Associates is separate and distinct from Rowan. But there is a relationship in that Crawford acquired the services of some of the Rowan staff, for example. Rowan still exists as a, as an engineering firm, but they're not the, they're not the proposer. Crawford and Associates is the one making the proposal to do the engineering. And so we received that proposal in January. And we met and reviewed it and had a fairly extensive negotiation with Crawford and Associates, including with their principal engineer, Ben Crawford, his name is, he was here. Kathy McKeown, who, as you know, was with Rowan, is now with Crawford and Associates, and would be the primary engineer on this project if the firm is selected. She was supposed to be here tonight, but I guess she got into a vehicle accident in Ducaia on her way here, actually. I understand she's okay, but she is, she is banged up a little bit. So, she's not here to answer any questions that you might have. I do want to go, I'm not going to go through any detail unless I can answer questions that you may have. But I do want to mention a few things. The recommendation is to, to hire Crawford and Associates at a price not to exceed $164,835, which is a higher number than the amount that was brought to the council in October. However, that number of $164,835 is down about $15,000 from the original proposal that was made to the city. In other words, we negotiated it down from $179,899 down to $164,835. Much of that work, much of that reduction came from the subconsulting firm of Harrison Associates. They're an urban design firm out of Berkeley that is proposed to be a subconsultant to Crawford and Associates. They were also involved in the, in the Rowan Associates proposal. And, you know, frankly, I, we may be able to even see some further reductions. I'm not sure about that, but a lot of the work that they're doing is actually design work associated with landscaping, street furniture, things like tree grates, and the design and specification of those improvements. It may sound simple, but all those details need to be in the construction drawings. And that's what we're preparing here, the construction drawings that will be used in the bidding process for contracting. And, so anyway, we did negotiate the price down. It's still higher than what was considered in, in October. I think there are some reasons for that, and Kathy could, you know, explain that further. If you do have some questions, I have a little bit of input on that. The other thing I do want to mention, and Margaret, you may need to input here. But there was, the city conducted an independent third-party review. Now, this was not an in-depth review, but there was an independent third-party review of the RFP and the proposal by Crawford. I personally spoke with a civil engineer principal with RRM Design Group out of San Luis Obispo. This is a firm that actually is familiar with our project. They did the original concept plan for the downtown improvement plan years ago. And I think, was it John Whiteman?
Uh, John, Will Banks.
Will Banks. I spoke to him about the project. I asked him to review some information. I emailed in the RFP, I emailed some other information about the project. There was some follow-up. I did not have direct follow-up with John. I understand that you may have talked to him?
Yeah, John did talk, I worked with John in other jobs, so I asked him first. Can you handle this? And he thought that his firm had built campus, the project, that they probably wouldn't be able to do it for the cost that they proposed tonight. And that maybe his firm hired in San Luis Obispo. But he felt that it was a fair price and it might be, could be a risk of going out again for another RFP. So, you know, it's always, it's always a risk deciding which one to do there. But I just felt comfortable to get another outside opinion, looking at this specific project and making sure we're getting it fair. Since we only had one, one proposal, and we had more to compare it to, I feel like, that's why we decided to ask.
And just a little bit of a follow-up to that, you know, there is a rule of thumb in, in design engineering costs. They're normally equal to roughly 10% of the construction value. We're looking at roughly at $1.8, $1.7 million construction value. We'll know more when we get the, you know, get the estimates as, as the, when we go through the design. But that's what we're anticipating. So the, the proposed amount by Crawford and Associates, it's within the, you know, that industry standard of 10%. So, that's a, for whatever it's worth. So there is a, there are some options identified. Option A, consider and accept the recommendation of the CSB. B, consider the recommendations and reject it, direct staff to reissue the RFP. And C would be to reconsider the entire project. We're not recommending D or C, but those are options certainly for the council. So there is also a suggested motion, fairly simple. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
The original package with Rowan, is that pretty much apples to apples, oranges to oranges, the pump are given with them? Or is there more in there?
Yeah, there, there was, the, the RFP was similar, but slightly different. And did result in, you know, some additional work that was not anticipated, at least when we wrote the original RFP. And that's primarily because we learned some information about the project going through it the first time, particularly with respect to utilities. And so that section was beefed up in the RFP, and that resulted in some, some higher expense in terms of the Crawford and Associates proposal. One of the other things that occurred, as I understand, and I believe this came from Kathy, AutoCAD, which is the design software, there's been an update in that software. And so all of the information that had been previously developed has to be uploaded and modified and consistent with that upgraded software. And there's, there's expense associated with that, so, those are...
I think it was like $10,000 or $12,000.
Yeah, yeah, it was a big number. You know, and in fact, the big numbers on the, you know, the, the project, one other thing. We required a, I believe this is correct, I believe we required a 90% plan, which we did not require in the first RFP. In other words, we required a 50% plan and 50% design specifications, and then a 90% plan. And of course, the final 100% plan. So there's some added expense there as well. But the big ticket items in, in the Crawford proposal are, well, one of them is the AutoCAD update. That's a $12,574 increase, or not increase, but, but number.
Is that, is that based on just hours?
Yeah, these are all, these are all based in hours. And in fact, you have this in your packet, it's the very last page. It's a little hard to see because it's...
It's really busy.
Yeah. I need a, I need a, I need my glasses, even with my glasses. But also, 50% plans, and these, I'm not saying these are increases, I'm just saying these are the big ticket items. The 90% plans, the upgraded utility plans, the 100% plan documents. And there is some, in the, in the previous proposal, there was some work with bid assistance that was optional. In this project, they're, Crawford and Associates is providing some assistance with the actual preparation of bid documents. And that, those are the last two items on that list. Not a lot of money, five grand, roughly five grand. But I don't know if that money was actually, it was listed as optional in the previous project.
It was full construction bid services, $14,000.
Now, one of the thing, and I don't want to confuse you, and I'm sure I won't, but one of the issues, because the engineering department is a bit up in the air with the city. You know, when, when you get ready to bid this and get into a construction phase, the city staff has always done construction inspection and, you know, so if there is a need for the city to hire somebody to do that due to a lack of personnel here, that will, that will have to come out of the available funds versus having city staff, in other words, you'll have to have somebody, and Crawford would be logically one to use during the construction phase, you know, in terms of inspection and staging and so on and so forth. So, that would be an added expense that isn't here. But we would, we would inform you at that point if that looks like it's going to happen, so.
I think I had two back in October, I had two items that were pushing me to go with Rowan, which was, it did seem like their percentage to a project was low, which is, you know, it's kind of juicy. Which made it turn out to be, made it turn out bad. But the other thing was, we were looking originally at completing this by the end of this year. What do we, do you have an idea of what we're looking at now?
There is a schedule in the proposal.
I, I think we're still on track, right?
Well, we're still on track, but currently, we're a month behind. Based on the schedule that Crawford and Associates gave us. And unfortunately, what that does is it, because the original proposal, you need to find that here. Did you find it?
No, that, that, I know it was in there.
It puts us into the end of the year. I just saw it, but I, of course, I can't find it. Yeah, we're not going to have any rain.
It doesn't really rain anymore, so we should be okay.
Yeah, maybe even we'll have 70 or 80 degree temperatures in December. Who knows? It'll be terrible.
That's a really nice new dog sitting down in the lake bed.
Well, I don't know what happened to that. It's weird. Let's see if I can, maybe it's in there. Okay, here it is. It didn't get copied, I had it in their, in their proposal. So currently, where we are, assuming, you know, there's a, there's an approval tonight, again, we're about a month behind. It looked like we were anticipating, um, design planning to begin, well, agreements and insurance to begin end of February. To enter into an agreement, and design planning to begin roughly the first of March. So we're roughly about a month behind. According to the schedule that had been proposed, we were going to start construction bidding mid-August and complete that mid-October and issue a, oh no, excuse me. Construction bidding August, September, and, and issue a notice of award to a contractor in early October and enter into agreements and do all the insurance work in mid-October. But we're a month behind now, so... But we're a month behind now, so we'd be looking at, you know, mid to late November. And I, you know, I don't know what that does in terms of pushing it back for a whole season at that point. It may be possible to do the construction during the winter time. You know, the problem that you've got is you're close to the lake here, of course, and high water table and so forth. So you may get into de-watering issues with construction, particularly with the kiln work and so forth. But, so I don't know. I don't know if I can really answer that schedule issue.
So when Rowan was here and they were pushing us to go with them, they were insistent that they had a lot of proprietary information that they had acquired because they did the earlier projects and then thought it would be a good idea to go with them. And does that come with the Crawford, I know you said there was some relationship?
Well, some of that, but there's still a need to design the project and...
Well, they were talking about elevations and stuff that they had that they maybe would not have to.
I think, and this is hard for me to answer, but it's really a question for them to answer, but...
But we're getting them, so to speak, that portion, part of that portion that we were going to go with. And I guess that's why Crawford did it rather than Rowan. And I noticed they, on their team, they have LaZica Engineering is on the team as well.
Correct.
And that was another issue that we were, you know, why is this going out? They're local and they're Ducaia, and they can deal with problems within 45 minutes or something like that, so.
Yeah, most of the work that LaZica would be doing is construction related.
And it starts with our proprietary part, Rowan, they still are part of the contract, so it still happens.
I like the team approach and the local aspect of it, that it's, you know, not somebody from, you know, San Luis Obispo or so.
Keep in mind, however, you know, the prior project was a different project than what we're talking now. And it had the ball downs and the table intersections, and none of that's in this.
Right, but she still said that they had certain information...
Some of that would be able to be carried over, some of the basics are.
Well, I would just say, anytime you go out for new RFPs, you run the risk of getting all around higher bids. So in this situation, I think we fair-spry as well. We, it's a little bit more, but it's a more detailed bid. Anytime you delay a project, you're guaranteed to spend more. Where are you spending $1,000 more just on program? Imagine the cost. I just felt like, whatever we can do to make this happen as soon as possible. And it's like a fair bid, and I'm excited if we can move forward.
Yeah, for me, my only hesitation was just how it came about. Thank you, Richard. But I mean, the numbers stand, and there are some positive aspects of having the local folks be involved. Because it is, money staying locally, which is kind of a nice plus. We have access to them, and, you know, obviously, we're going to save money if changes have to happen. You know, travel, you know, from the maximum of Sacramento is a lot better than Los Angeles or even San Francisco for that matter. So it definitely has its positives. You know, and if, you know, through Richard's help and moving down the road, you know, there's some possible savings we can find that may help us too. So I did have some hesitation in this in the beginning, but I think Margaret's diligence, some negotiation, you know, working with Richard and Mark and Kevin coming in on it at the end, I think we've got something that we can move forward with and, you know, maybe even a little more streamlined than the last proposal. You know, the last proposal sounded great. I mean, the first number was $123,000, but there were $30-plus thousand in extras that in reality probably weren't really extras. They were going to be necessities for how we needed to move forward. So that number brings it in line, and, you know, just like as Mark said too, you know, sometimes, you know, you get in a position where the money's not there in the project and something happens. You know, we didn't, Margaret's diligence to make sure we move forward properly, so. But that being said, I think I can support this, I think we'll move forward with it. Mira Brute and Matina lamented, it'd be nice to get the project going.
All right, with that, we'll open it up to the public. Any questions from the public regarding this agenda item? Silence tonight. Everybody's looking forward to corned beef and cabbage, huh? All right, we'll bring it back to council for any further discussion. If not, there are the suggested motions, as Richard has stated.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Crawford and Associates to develop and complete civil engineering design services and plan for the downtown Lakeport Improvement Project Phase Two Civil Engineering Design Services specification at a price not to exceed $164,835.
Second. We have a motion in second. Any further from council? Seeing nothing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, announced. I thank you again, Richard, for writing that information, and of course, our best goes out. Kathy? Yeah, she's going to be okay, and this maybe will put a smile on her face. Probably happier this time than when she walked out last time. So, just in a much different circumstance, unfortunately. Yes, council communications. Council member, Richard.
I appreciated Senator Mike Quayre's visits. We'd go with his field rep carry, and there's a great tour. Thank you. Our board director bringing in, showing us the wells and structures. We talked about a number of issues that look great to, you know, there's a state rep that is interested in moving forward information specifically regarding the senior center and the needs that they have to confront with their appliances and issues. Let's see, I'm looking forward to arriving along with our Lakeport Police Department on the 27th and the chamber board meeting on the 24th.
Councilwoman Brulet, have nothing to report? Councilwoman Billups?
Lakeport board meeting this morning for the Lakeport Main Street Association. And other than that, I'll probably be going to the seniors' board meeting on Friday, but probably not for this Friday.
On the 27th?
On the 27th, I'll already be going to the seniors' board meeting. Friday, that's it.
Pro Tem, Matina?
Tomorrow morning is a LACCO meeting, it'll be here at 9:30. And Friday, I'll be going to Cloverdale for the LEED division meeting, towards that.
For myself, I attended the transit technical advisory committee meeting with our consultant, Lake Transit hired, to help us reduce pollution as well as save energy for our transit system here. Just more of an introduction and how they're going to proceed through their current project, which the community will be involved with that, and other stakeholders committee that will be created too. So there may be some hopes from the community or even from council as well to consider that it'd be a completely separate group of people. Attended the LEED auction on Saturday night, and it was a lot of fun. And they raised quite a bit of money, and Pro Tem Matina was there. A lot of good folks there, so it was a good time. The ABC transit, regular transit meetings were canceled. I also be at LACCO, where Pro Tem Matina tomorrow. And this Friday, the executive committee will be meeting for the League of California Cities in Cloverdale. I'll be there for that, as well as our business meeting. And I'll be returning and not attending the dinner that goes along with that for a charity auction for two young boys from Kelsmith area that lost their father in a transit accident. We're going to raise some money for their college fund. And yes, the goal planning at the end of the month on the 27th. And that should be it.
Kevin?
Nothing to report this morning?
Chief?
One thing, since we're now the proud owners of a new police station, I just wanted to thank the city council, city manager and staff that was involved with all their work and dedication to that. I think it's going to have a very positive impact on our police department and our community, so thank you.
Absolutely, I know that Lake Transit is looking forward to the police station being there. It's going to help with some issues there that the bus stop presents right now.
If we need to, we're not there. I was going to say, we're going to put in the beer.
Yeah, because the Kmart baskets being used for benches looks awfully awesome.
Yeah, I was just by there today, and yeah, it does look good.
So, yeah, they were excited. We appreciate your work on that too, chief. So I mean, that, we were fortunate when that came about, and I think that down the road, that's going to turn into, not only good for us, but with our current police station being able to utilize it potentially for space for private or public enterprise, so that would be...
So chief, you think the location of the police station might actually have an impact on some of the theft that goes on nearby there and local business?
I do, absolutely.
I can't help but think that that would have an impact.
I think it will have an impact.
Sure, Kmart will be thoroughly excited. That's for sure.
Ms. Woodya?
Just a reminder that the next FEMA, it's really the final training that we have set for now, is Friday. So your schedules have changed, and you can make it 8 o'clock and 1 o'clock.
And we still have the option, the online option, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
And when does that have to be completed by you?
April 1st.
Okay.
Mr. Buffalo?
Hi.
Anything else?
Just to remind council, Friday at 12:00, we're cutting for travel and health for a new facility for pediatric surgery, so...
Yeah, it'd be nice to see you. I know that Stacey is possibly attending, I unfortunately cannot. I unfortunately had to take my son there yesterday, but the facility looks great. And I moved over with his current doctor there, and they did a wonderful job inside there. And the staff is, it's nice to see them do, have so many there, so.
Do you know?
Just nice to be back.
Well, with that being said, everyone, please enjoy your St. Patrick's Day celebrations, and please do so responsibly. Enjoy the commemorative capitals and this meeting of the jury.